I'll start the meeting. This is an official meeting of the Springfield Women's Commission chaired by myself, Councilor Walsh, held on Zoom. And we are joined by Commissioner Ellen Moorehouse, Commissioner Ayana Crawford, Commissioner and City Councilor Zaida Govan, also Chair of the Mental Health Committee, Commissioner Mariah Mock, Commissioner Janice Stewart, Commissioner Lamari Jackson, and Commissioner Zumaly. Zumaly, you're still muted. Yeah. You see, there's Zumaly or Wonder Woman, I can't tell, so.
Oh.
There you are, I like your graphic. So, before we get on to our official business, I'm going to introduce you to Vernice Smith Brown, who I think you can see on our meeting. Last night at the public speech portion of the Springfield City Council, Vernice spoke. And what she is advocating, and it's right up our alley, fits right into our objectives, is a call to action on domestic violence. And when she spoke, I could just hear the bells going off, saying, this is someone that should work with us. I like the idea of a call to action. I think that could be one of, obviously, you know, I shared with her that when we did our survey, domestic violence was a major concern of everybody who responded to the survey. We could work together to be effective. So I want to introduce you, Vernice, to the members of my committee. And if you could share a little bit of what you shared last night at the City Council speak out.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me. I want to also say congratulations to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'd like the school officials and school nurses to get involved by implementing educational conferences twice a year on domestic violence. We need to empower the youth with knowledge of the topic so they will know domestic violence is a serious matter and they can stop the cycle. And thank you for your time.
Okay. Yeah, I think I can share your story. And what you're hoping to do. If it's not too hard for you. For one people who have had experience, one way or the other, with domestic violence personally and professionally. So I would say you're among friends.
Thank you. A little bit about my story. I was Chair of Going to How the Environment Can Affect a Child. A child in this environment can normalize abuse, creating a cycle. When I was 15, I entered a relationship in which I experienced domestic violence. Without counseling, this affected my relationships with many others. My family wasn't aware of the abuse I suffered. But class meets new. By the age of 10, I watched my mother abused by my father. I was molested and knew others who were molested. I saw a female being raped by multiple men. A close confidant of mine also normalized a woman being beaten. It was the act of her father. A female being hurt by the opposite sex became normal. I grew up thinking less of them, and the less of myself the older I became. Ultimately, I looked for a domineering figure type of boyfriend or developed a defensive manner. It's a topic that's been dear to my heart, and I'm just grateful.
Very brave for you to share that, what you've gone through. But what really struck a chord with me is that you are looking for a call to action. And I think I join my fellow commissioners to say, we want to have an effect on domestic violence in Springfield. So I'd like to open it up to the commissioners to see if you'd like to make any comments or share anything with Vernice.
I would like to just tell you, Vernice, this is an excellent, excellent project that you bring to us. We have been looking for a way to jump in. And a call to action is a perfect, a perfect way of doing it. And so we'll definitely, I'm definitely interested in seeing how we can build as a group to really come out with a strong call to action, because together, our voices make a lot of noise.
Absolutely. Yeah. And I don't know if anybody else has any.
If I may, Councilor Walsh, thank you so much, Vernice, for sharing your story. I was not able to be there last night at the council meeting to hear your speak out. But I know that that takes a lot of courage to do that. And I appreciate you doing it, because I know that a lot of, not even just women, but men also experience domestic violence, not as a high rate as women do, but men do. So I think when we share our stories, it gives others the opportunity to, a little bit of courage, to share theirs. And I'm hoping that that's what will happen after you've shared your story and after we continue allowing others to share their stories. So I totally agree with the call to action. I'd like to hear more about how you think that would happen, how we can support it. But thank you very much again. Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you, Councilor, who's doing a wonderful job with really related fields, mental health. I see your hand raised.
Yes, thank you so much for acknowledging me.
You have a new hairdo.
Yeah.
I just washed it. I just washed it. I just washed my hair, that's all. So you'll see the real me tomorrow, but you know, whatever. I'm not sure where this recording is going to, but whatever. So anyway, thank you so much, Councilor Walsh, for bringing our guest speaker on today. And thank you, Vernice, for sharing your story and being bold and courageous to share, because I think that's certainly the most important thing that we share. You know, what has happened to us and how do we move forward? And how do we support and empower each woman, whether it's domestic violence, whether it's wage discrimination, whatever it might be. And so I think, and so I think, you know, certainly doing something around domestic violence. I know the month is generally in October, is it? Is that when it is?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, so perhaps, you know, creating an event and collaborating with you on doing something publicly in our city around that. I would certainly think that would be a great way to collaborate and partner with you. Thank you.
Okay. Zumaly, was your hand up? I thought it was.
It was, it was. My colleagues did ask the questions, and so I want to thank you for being vulnerable. It's not easy for women of color to come out and tell their truth. But I did want to, you know, highlight, I would be curious to know how a support system would look like and who would be our target, because as Ms. Govan said, you know, it's just not women, even though we need to address this from a woman's lens right now, but it's also men. So I'd like to see that carried out and who our target is and what's the message that we want to share.
I believe you said last night you wanted to do something with the school committee, right?
I just want everyone to get their comment. Is it okay?
Yeah, I think, Councilor Walsh, if it's okay, I'd like to hear what the vision is.
What I did bring forth was to target the 10 to 12-year-olds in the school. Get the school involved, school nurses involved. That way, they can be aware of the subject and can help stop the cycle in that way. I've been in the field for 17 years, and I'm willing to help. Do these conferences.
Well, I heard you say school committee, and I thought, nah, let's switch it to the Springfield Women's Commission. We'll take ownership of it, because we do have on our committee Latanya Nalo, who's on the school committee, and things like that. But in our past meetings, we've been talking about doing a survey, correct? And Mariah, did you get any feedback from the survey you sent out?
I did. The commissioners added a good amount of questions to the topics for us to create this survey that we want to send out to the city. We still have to kind of figure out, like, the way that we're going to do that, like whether we want to create social media specific to the Springfield Women's Commission or like, share it with like friends, families, people that we know in the city to kind of get out as well. But a lot of the questions that we got were like, what kind of groups and organizations are you involved in the city? What topics do you feel that would benefit from hearing about in the city? Where do you live? How do you feel living there? What you like and do about your neighborhood? Opportunities you wish were available for you? Anything that might be causing insecurities for you as a resident of Springfield? Just areas of help and support, ways to feel safer, and kind of all stuff like that. So I feel like we got a really good, like stepping off point, but we need to figure out kind of how to reach the audience that we are trying to reach to like answer those questions.
What do you think, Ayana? I see your hand up.
I'm sorry, I was up from before. Let me take it down.
All right. Well, let me ask you, Ellen, you have a lot of good ideas and been involved with a lot of different groups, because we're at the point now where we've gotten to know each other. We have a sense of, we want to be impactful. And we want the Springfield Women's Commission to be, when people think of these issues, we are who you go to and accomplish some things, you know? So people look to us in these situations. I kind of had a sense that we wanted to do, we had talked about a listening tour and the survey. It's just a matter of how do we put it together? And it's getting to be summer, so I'm not sure if we'll meet again. I don't anticipate meeting in July, but what I do anticipate and hope for is that members of this commission will branch off into committees. For example, if anybody's going to be on the Call to Action Committee, they could work through the summer, because we want to do something in the public in October, which is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And you just posted something, Ellen, it's.
It's an additional day in November as well, International Day for the Elimination of Violence.
Yeah, we want to have a very.
In the fall, I think is a great.
Fall, very public forum, but we want to be ready to go for it. Ellen may be a little busy, though, right, Ellen?
I think so, maybe. I'm considering tossing my hat in the wind for award five, so we'll see. But we'll talk. Catering to your point, I think this is sort of twofold. So the survey and dissemination, you know, marketing communications is everything. So reaching the audiences we need, I think that goes hand in hand with a partnership with the local civic association. So quasi-listening tour while always sharing this link essentially for the next 90 days or however long it takes. I don't think it'll be difficult to create the survey. It will be difficult to get the word out, right? Set a deadline and have people actually take it. So if we're going to go out to these councils, sharing it with as many groups as possible, schools, civic associations, you name it. So getting the information is one half of the battle. And then I think acting as a resource or sharing the resources that we know about collectively, like the representation in this room alone, right? Like, to bring it back to Vernice, if someone needs resources or emergency help right now, who are we able to connect them to? What sort of resources can we corral or point them to, you know, various state offices and things like that? I think even just navigating or knowing can be so difficult when you're in that kind of scenario. So I see our role as really twofold, getting the word out, trying to get as much information as we can on what to work about, work on. But in the meantime, we, of course, know these issues are here and are already happening. And connecting resources to the folks that need it most is more than half the battle.
And what do you think, Lamari?
I definitely think that, sorry, my camera just like readjusted real there. But before, I want to preface this with, Vernice, thank you so much for being so brave for bringing forth your story to so many minds in the room. But I want to assure you that you are in a safe space. And this call to action would be a great kickoff for the Women's Commission. But like was said before, it's sort of addressing and supporting the logistic component of it of how we want to necessarily like broadcast that and get, or corral, I should say, our target group in the most effective way. So that, plenty of time, I think, to sort of figure out the logistic component of that. So this is the perfect time.
Ann, what do you think?
Because if I keep repeating stuff, I had a little surgery on the left ear today. So you see my head tilted, and I can't hear you that well. But anyway. I think it's a great idea, and I'm on board for whatever. And sorry to hear your story, what had happened in the past. But it has happened to so many women, and it's still happening to so many of us out there. But I'm on board, but whatever.
Okay. And Denise?
Yes.
You've got any more thoughts?
Again, I just applaud Vernice. I just love the call to action and.
Me too.
I also think that bringing it to a younger audience is so important, because this is right before they start to develop those friendships. And it's the same way that we have good touch, bad touch with small children. Sometimes we forget that when the children become intermediates and start to grow a little and their bodies start to grow a little, that we need to have these conversations with them about what doesn't work anymore. You know, my grandson came home today and he was playing around in school and knocked a candy out of a child's hand. Well, it's all fun, but he's almost as tall as I am. So it's time for that conversation. What is and what isn't appropriate when it comes to people and tussling and all this stuff here? And so I really like that idea that we're coming to younger people. I also would love to see us talk to some high school young ladies, junior high and high school young ladies, because that is where it's starting. You know, my office faces the cafeteria, and I see a lot of horseplay with even boys and girls. And, you know, horseplay starts one way and turns out another. So, you know, and it's not just about the girls and boys. It's about the girls whacking the boys, too. So I really, I really like the idea that we're taking it to the youth. And I really, I really love the call to action. We've been looking for something, and a call to action is a great one. Thank you, Commissioner Walsh.
Oh, well, thank you. I mean, this is the best committee I've ever been on. I mean, there's so much talent on this. And so many different, like Lamari with Adam Gomez, Ayana with Rep Ramos. I mean, there's Denise in the schools and Mariah at AIC. And we don't know where Ellen's going, but she's here with us. And Zaida, if you could tell them, I think the Women's Commission should do something similar to what you are doing with your Mental Health Committee. You are having, in June, you are having a special day put together with your Mental Health Committee. I am a member of it, but if you could outline that, that's also something we might want to think about.
Yeah, so what, yeah, what we're doing is we're having a mental health checkup, a launch. So we're launching, you know, an event where it's kind of like a kickoff to having regular mental health checkups. And that's something that I think everybody should be doing on a regular basis. Like you get an annual physical, you should get an annual mental health checkup. And I really love the idea of having domestic violence awareness brought to the young kids and like Denise said, to even the older kids. Because a lot of times what we do is we talk to the girls and tell the girls, you know, don't let them do this and don't let them do that, you know? And we should be talking to the boys and telling them, don't do that, don't do this. You know what I mean? So I'm really glad that you're focusing on not just the girls, but the boys and the girls, and giving them the message that, you know, what's right and what's not right, right? Because a lot of times we do see that in our homes and we see it in our neighborhoods. So we see them, like Denise said, horsing around, so they think that's what they're supposed to do. And, you know, when it gets, goes too far, they don't know what to do with that, you know? So if we, you know, try to educate them and prevent that from happening, having it go too far, and being on prevention, that's what the Mental Health Checkup Day is all about. And this is about prevention as well, and I really love that. So any way that I can help, please.
And we're joined by Karina. Thanks for joining us, Karina. Where are you? Are you in a car?
She is.
Yeah, you're muted. Karina, you're muted.
She's saying she's on her way home from work.
Okay, you're muted. Unmute yourself. Can't hear you.
Hi, everybody.
Yeah, yeah.
Hi.
Yeah, it was my extended day. I'm just getting off of work and I'm going home, so I'm driving.
Oh, well, be careful. We don't want to be responsible.
I know. Hands free, hands free.
But the thing, to get back to the Mental Health Checkup Day, it's actually going to be, I believe, in Court Square. And people are going to see this committee out in the community. And, you know, this is my goal for the Women's Commission. They're going to see us out in the community.
What is it there? It's going to be June 29th. Going to be from 11 to 3. We're having, a lot of, mental health agencies are going to be out there. Hopefully, some of the city officials and the water department will be giving out water, maybe some food trucks. We're in the planning stages of it. It's just going to be something that, you know, people will have information. We're in the process of developing some sort of a like, a card. The United Way has this really cool booklet, keychain kind of thing with all the important numbers on there. So maybe having some resources like that. I'd love to see everybody out there. Love to see you, Ellen, Denise, anybody that wants to come out that day. Maybe you could get yourself a mental health checkup. We will be doing some on that day. But what we'll be doing on that is we're going to be announcing what day in July, every agency in the city is going to be doing free mental health checkups. So you can walk into any agency on that specific day. We haven't chosen a date yet for July. We get a mental health checkup, 10, 15 minutes, sit down with the clinician that will, you know, talk to you and listen to you. That's what we do more of. And, you know, figure out, you can figure out whether you want to continue and maybe see a therapist and talk to somebody, or if you're good. So that's what we're doing.
And we need to replicate that for domestic violence. Now, I mean, if we wanted to do something like that and call in people, is that something we could do at Putnam?
Absolutely. You could probably do it anywhere, yeah.
I'm directing that to Denise, because that's where she is. Yeah. So, well, but I mean, obviously, we want to do the same kind of thing.
The schools is a little bit more different and complicated, I think, you know, the guidelines that they have to follow. But I'm sure it can be done.
All right. We would just have to find.
Denise, you're muted.
Yeah, for our call to action.
Here's what I will say, is that our PTO president, Ms. Radia Hall, she has been adamant about getting some mental health for our young people. And so in the vehicle of the PTSO, we could definitely do something. And that is the way to get it into our schools without having to go through all of the channels. Because if you're bringing professionals in, we're not doing anything that's, you know, that's just us, just, you know, speaking from what we know or whatever the case is. And so we could definitely do that. Our last meeting will be in June, obviously, right now. But we can definitely plan on making sure that we have an evening and maybe a panel. And the other PTSOs in the junior highs or the high schools could do so. At least a target, because that's an older group. But what I want to say too, while I was speaking, was that the males in our school, in all the schools, again, they need the same help as the females. And without a doubt, to bring them into the conversation, because this is such a, such a big, big thing for our children. And because they've come back from COVID, and I've been able to see them firsthand, they don't know how to interact with one another anymore. It's very, very, very difficult. The fights that we have within not only our school, but all the schools, they just don't have the, they've been away from each other for so long. The interactions are very challenging and very difficult. So we definitely need to reach out to our young people. It's going to help, for sure.
Boy, what are the aftermaths of COVID? I've got some hands up. Go right across, your hands up.
I more just wanted to make sure, you know, the conversation sort of went there, that we were, you know, roping in schools or local affiliations, Boys and Girls Clubs, Girl Scouts, you know, whatever form this event takes, you know? Is it an actual event or a call to action, a pledge? Maybe we like, you know, what is the pledge then that we share with the students? Or what information are we imparting? Maybe it's a pledge for city officials to focus XYZ resources on the, you know, almost like a public opportunity for them, but also at the same time imparting real information to the students at the event, whatever form that takes. I feel like we can be creative.
Well, I know I want the form to be something that the public can see or participate in. And I think that who ends up on the Domestic Violence Committee will make recommendations to me how to do it. Mariah?
I have something I think we might be able to work with in that, like bringing awareness and that conversation about like domestic and relationship violence to schools. So as most of you know, my sister passed away at the age of 17 from domestic violence and relationship violence-related incidents. And I've been working, my family has been working with the District Attorney's Office, Anthony Galuny, and the whole like domestic survivor support system over there to actually create a documentary and like an awareness, like video that they're planning on showing to schools in the area. So that is in the final stages of being completed. They had like a whole camera crew come and do like a story with my family. They went through the whole situation. They're like planning on talking about warning signs and stuff like that. And just like for parents and students to be able to identify those situations. And they're trying to roll that out this fall. And I'm not sure what their plan is for like which schools they're planning to hit or which districts. But it's all through Anthony Galuny. So I feel like that could be something that we can relate to this, and the commission can possibly attend those viewings and like start a conversation with it.
Well, that certainly could start a, if we have a forum, that certainly could start the forum. I, how was that for you, Mariah, to have to do that in your family? That's really, you have to relive it. It's so brave.
Yeah, it was definitely an interesting experience. It's been, so we've been working on it for the last two years. So we've had time to kind of settle in to like, like reliving the experience and everything. But it was kind of a really emotional thing, because they, like, the courthouse, the District Attorney's Office came to our house, and they wanted to like kind of go into my sister's life. And they wanted to interview me specifically, because I had the largest role in what happened. Like I was the one who kind of discovered the situation and everything. So reliving all of that was really kind of hard, but I wanted to do it because we're showing it to schools. And that is really important, more so than how I kind of feel about talking about it.
Your sister was a senior in high school, correct? Was it Central?
Sabbath.
The Sabbath, yeah, yeah. So certainly, it's very relatable. Well, that's great of you to do it, that's for sure. So.
I totally feel like that's a way we can get that conversation started in schools.
I think it would do if we show that. That would certainly generate a conversation, but we'll have to, you know, see how that goes. Now, let me see, who hasn't? Ayana, is your hand up? Or is it just permanently up?
Yes, it's up. I did.
Yeah, and then I put it back up. Yeah, so what I wanted to just say quickly is that these are great, um, sort of conversation and great ideas. And, you know, I just really like the synergy and sort of the, the wholeness and the, and the wellness and the wonderful pieces. And so I see a lot of different moving parts. Health and domestic violence, a lot of moving parts. And so I want us to kind of think about, you know, strategically that we have not necessarily, um, you know, really sort of, um, introduced or reintroduced ourselves to the community. And I think we need to certainly think about that piece first. And certainly put together a plan of action in terms of who are we, what's our mission, what's our vision? So that we can then address those particular areas, not to say that we can do an event in this magnitude. Um, Bernice, um, but I want us to make sure that we're clear as we're sort of thinking about what is it gonna look like publicly? Because we've gotta know how to be able to respond if folks say, well, for the, what's the women's commission? What do you do? What's your vision? What's your mission? And, and how are you partnering with organizations? And so I want to be very transparent and very clear. Because that's some of the work that I do when I'm working with different committees and different organizations, is that I need to be very clear on what the goals are, what the mission, what the vision is. So then that way we can really sort of, um, do a better job of presenting ourselves. Because a lot of people are just now hearing about the women's commission. And so I want to be able to do, you know, who we are first, and then set that committee up of domestic violence. Where they can work on the details of it, but we need to as a body really clarify who we are. Thank you.
And, and how do you suggest we introduce ourselves to the community? I mean, I, obviously you can do it through, um, press conferences, press releases, or the announcement of what, whatever it is we're going to do. But, um, I, I want this committee to make an impact. That's why I was very careful in who I asked to join it, cause I knew I had a great group of women who are very, who, who are and continue to be affected, you know. Um, Lamari, you have your hand up, but you're also muted.
Yes, I just wanted to, uh, to also sort of underscore the importance of a call to action as a call to action, not just a call for, you know, here's some awareness, here is, you know, just like a dialogue or rhetoric, but like what physically can, tangibly can be done for victims, uh, and, and, and future victims of domestic violence, especially, you know, the young kids, as I was saying before. Um, stressing the importance of like who's safe versus a not safe person. And, you know, as the women's commission, we also need to extend that. I'd be remiss if I, if I didn't mention it during Pride Month. But that goes for our young trans women as well, because they are also a huge target for domestic violence within the family. Um, as they're transitioning or, you know, too scared to come out or anything like that. But, um, but in, in focusing on the logistics, it's what is that action going to be specifically? Like, yeah, there's a pledge, yeah, there's, um, any, anything sort of that. But, you know, representing, um, well, I mean, representing myself, but, you know, from Senator Gometz's office, who is chair on the Senate side of, uh, children, families and persons of, with disability. Um, it's, it's of significant importance that there is, uh, i- in the logistic component, a tangible, um, impact that we as the women's commission can do.
Right, and I think that's probably why you all joined the commission. Uh, Suma Lee.
Uh, yeah, I just want to, uh, uplift what Ayanna said and Lamari both. And I think that if we continue having these conversations about who we are and what we're capable of doing, then when we have these calls to action, then we have a clear understanding of our roles. Um, because again, um, understanding that we all have like an abundance and, and knowledge and autonomy. Um, but us as a group need to be more clear of like what our mission is and what we're not just capable of, but what is our, like, not necessarily our end goal, but where are we leading to this? Um, I like, you know, I like to continue some dialogue around that. Um, while we, while we push forward in some of these, what I call campaigns, right? But these calls to actions, because again, for me, it's one thing to, um, get the information, but it's another thing to get the information and, and really do some kind of, um, structural changes. And the other thing I wanted to highlight too was maybe, um, in the survey, we could, uh, format some kind of question around this TV. Um, just to get better perspective, um, and understanding. Um, because what I fear is maybe there is someone who's suffering right now and not safe, and there's nothing that we can do.
Okay, and, uh, Ver- Bernice, I think, uh, in a matter of time, it might be better if you, uh, if you did email to everybody uh, the speech, you know, so what I'm thinking is that, you know, we've all kind of gotten a sense of each other. And I, what I'd like to do is put together committees. I mean, I think I'd like to assign you, you fellow commissioners to different committees to get, to get things done. So we can move forward and give, give you some tasks. So that in October, we'll be ready to have this public call to action and, and have resources and, and everything like that. So if that's all right with, with you, I, I will work on that. Cause there are other things I would like us to do. Um, uh, I think Bernice, if you could quickly sum up some of the points, and then I, I have another issue I wanted to ask with the commissioners. So if you could do that, do you want to do that? Bernice, did you want to just, you know, couple of minutes, just kind of share something else? And then I, I have to move on to a different agenda.
We wanted you to sum up your speech, if you could.
Oh, sure. Um, thank you, Zaida. I was gonna email a copy, just so we wouldn't be rushed, but, um.
Just still do that.
Okay, um, it basically, I'll go from the top and I'll skip over the part that I've already read for, for you.
Yeah.
But, "Good evening, my name is Bernice Smith-Drum. I'm a registered nurse of seventeen years, and I have concerns regarding our community." "Today I want to focus on domestic violence. Domestic violence affects all ages, crosses all social, economic groups, ethnicities, races, genders, and sexualities. According to Mass.org, exposure to domestic violence has profound effects on children. Research indicates that as many ten million children per year may witness or be victims of violence in their homes. There is a correlation between domestic violence and child abuse, which may result in a child being physically injured as a direct result of domestic violence. Even if there is no physical harm inflicted upon a child, being a witness to domestic violence in a home often causes adverse effects. Domestic violence includes using children to criticize parenting skills, threatening to take the children away, using children to relay messages, and using visitations to harass the parent. Many children who witness the violence in the home suffer from anxiety, post-traumatic stress disorder. Young children may exhibit eating and sleeping difficulties and concentration problems. They may become withdrawn, dependent, and delayed in achieving the expected milestones. Older children could exhibit these same symptoms and also run the risk of becoming violent themselves, suffering from academic failure, substance abuse, and problems in their own relationships. In addition, these children are more likely to commit antisocial behavior at a young age and have significantly higher risk of being involved in the juvenile justice system than those who have not been exposed to violence in the home."
Yeah, well, uh, you know, I think we told, we all totally agree with you. We're gonna, we're gonna. I, I, I love the call to action and, uh, as we get further along and what we're gonna do. We, we, we will add you as part of an ad hoc committee. I think, I, I, I don't see any reason why the women's commission can't also reach some people and create ad hoc committees to help us, um, achieve our goals. So, uh, but now I want to switch to something else. I think I sent to you from our, uh, we have a consultant helping us out on the women's commission. If you didn't get it, because, uh, they sent it from the council office about, um, four, fourth, after four. Uh, the Springfield Women's Commission Correspondence Recognition Committee. Did, did any of you get that or have a chance to look at it? Yeah, and.
I, I didn't get it.
Okay, you didn't get it? If not, I'll, I'll, I asked the council office to send it, but I'll send it to you, Bernice. Okay. And, and this is the women's commission reaching out to women in our community that have distinguished themselves uh, and, and receiving a formal recognition from the Springfield Women's Commission. Okay, and there were some, um, either through, um, resolves or on, on the, on the council floor. Uh, Zaida, you and I could do that, or, or just simply a letter of recognition and thanks for what they've done. And in the, uh, correspondence I sent you, uh, I, there, I suggested that we reach out to members of the Springfield, uh, the Special Olympics. There are, uh, participants in the Special Olympics from, from Springfield. And I believe one of them is from Indian Orchard, uh, Zaida.
Yeah.
And Defarge, yep.
Yeah.
And the, the women who are organizing the Juneteenth Jubilee. Okay, I mean, there's just a lot of people, a lot of women in our committee, in our community that are doing things that should be recognized. And I also think that they should be recognized with, with a letter or some correspondence from the, uh, from the women's commission. And that's another committee, the Correspondence Recognition Committee. And that's Denise, where you come in. I don't know if it's too late in the year, but I, I'm hoping that we will have our own letterhead.
Mm-hmm.
With the, uh, city seal, the Springfield Women's Commission, the names of all the commissioners. So we can send these letters on behalf of the Springfield Women's Commissioners. We want to, we want to recognize you for your efforts and so forth and so on. So, I mean, that's not as, um, dramatic as the, um, uh, call to action. But I think it's a very positive thing for, to be doing. And then it creates an awareness that there's a commission out there recognizing women. So what do you guys think about that?
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, but we, we do need the right letterhead. And is it too late for Putnam to do something like that, of course?
Uh, we're out of school next week and he's, he's, um, right now, he's printing the diplomas for all of the high schools.
Oh, wow.
It's a twenty, twenty-four seven, so, um, I don't know that, that we'll get into his schedule.
Okay.
But he is, he is gonna be there all summer. That's what he tells me.
Uh, would he be able to do this in the summer?
I'm sure he can fit it in someplace. He is, you know, he's there, he's gonna be in the building.
Are you gonna be there?
No, ma'am. At the end of, at the end of school, they, they cut off my salary and send me home.
Uh, you can send me his information and I can call him?
Of course, of course. We'll, we'll do that. And matter of fact, tomorrow and Thursday are the last two days for the cafe.
Oh, no kidding? Yeah, you know, you know, that, that, we had talked about meeting, meeting at Putnam. Um, but we've got to do that during the year, that's for sure, cause, uh,
Sure.
We can, we can go in and have a meal there.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, we did that before. And, and it was effective. Okay, all right, we'll put that, put that on our list of, uh, of things to do. So, uh, yeah, I want to definitely create, um, letterhead. And, and then another, um, suggestion from, uh, was to sign up, have west, have commissioners sign up for the Western Mass Economic Development Council emails. Then you get it, we get a sense of what's going on and who's done things in the, uh, committee. So, uh, if you haven't received this correspondence, let me know and I'll resend it. But I like the idea of recognition. And, and Zaida, we should, we should definitely think about doing resolve in honor of the, uh, Special Olympics. Particularly since there's somebody from Indian Orchard. You know, I think there's a couple of.
Yeah, we.
Springfield that participated in that.
We actually wanted to do one from the, um, Indian Orchard Citizens Council, so maybe we could do it together.
Right, that would be great. Yeah, I, I definitely want to do something on behalf of the, of the women's commission. So we'll have to figure out how that, how we do that, so that it's the women's commission and not the city council that gets the recognition for the rich, young women. So, yeah. Always, I'm always so energized by these meetings. There's so much, so much talent and goodwill here. So. Bernice, you really added a lot to our meeting. I'm so happy you came to the, what, what inspired you to go to the public speak?
It's just, it's something that, uh, just been on my heart for a long time, that I'm afraid.
Yeah. Uh, you know, it's great because, you know, with Zoom, we haven't had that many people. speaks. So, yeah, it was terrific having you there last night. So are there any other, any other issues to bring up? Do we want to meet, do we want to take a chance on meeting in July?
Hmm, if it's on Zoom, is anybody going on vacation at the end of July, at the end of June? I mean, yeah, what is it? The beginning of July, right?
This is June seventh.
June fifth, I mean, July fifth? You're talking, oh, that's the day after the Independence Day.
Yeah.
But it might be nice to have a check-in. It's, it's Zoom.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
Keep the continuity going. And there are so many activities throughout the summer that we can go to. And one thing, perhaps, one thing perhaps we could do catering is that, at, um, what is it, awards company? They make, they make the little tags. We could, you know, if the city can't afford it, we could probably just all go in and get some little tags that say that we are commissioners, so that when we go to these events, that we are, you know, we're responding as women commissioners and.
I like that.
If we're going to Juneteenth or domestic violence, or even the, you know, I, I wanted to announce the upcoming baby shower, community baby shower, that, you know, that we're, we're, we're being seen in the community.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, ma, uh, counselor. Denise, what is the baby shower?
Well, it's a baby shower that's gonna take place on June the twenty-fifth at twelve noon at federal court. So that's the STCC Technology Park.
Mm-hmm.
And it's going to be sponsored by Extreme Science Kid. And we, resources will be there for WIC, nutrition, child safety, medical, and more. Um, and it's free to expectant mothers or families with children six months or younger. Registration is a must, and each registered guest, guest will receive a gift. And for more information, you can call eight eight three seven six eight six. And I, I would really love to tell Stephanie, who is, um, putting this together, about Bernice, who is also a nurse, she's a registered nurse, and to see if we can, and, and Zaida, to see if we can get a component in there, uh, for some mental health.
Absolutely.
Of course, the domestic violence piece, even if you just have a small table of information there.
Yeah, would, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Well, and that would be a future goal at, at these events, to have a brochure about the women's commission and who we are. Pictures of everybody on the commission and, you know, organizations they're in, they're involved. And that's, that's another piece of, of our identity.
Sure, and that, that I could start to work on, and we could do that. We probably can't do it this summer at Putnam, but, um, we might even be able to just print out some along the way. But a brochure is, is a nice, even if it's not a brochure, but one of those, um, tent, not tent cards, but card. You know, a, a five by seven card. It says who we are and what we're doing.
Yeah, and if we can't fit pictures, we can certainly pick, put everybody's name. And, and our tent cards I want to do over, cause they don't have the city seal. On it, yeah, so, so, yeah, so that we would be recognized wherever we go. So you're feeling that, eh, July fifth might work for me, and, and will we, we'll do it on July fifth on Zoom? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I think so. I would be convenient, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I won't, I, I will, I'll be in DR. My family doesn't even know I'm gonna like hide and get away real quick. Um, so I'll be on the plane coming back home. Um, but if there's any notes or anyone wants to follow up with me, I'll be here for it on the sixth.
Okay, okay. Well, and I, I go on vacation the ninth, so that. Okay, okay. Well, and I I go on vacation the ninth, so that, that works for me. Yeah.
Yeah, I think it'd be great to check in one more time in advance of any fall event or summer things.
And depending on COVID and everything, did we want to stick to Zoom?
Yeah.
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 Yeah, okay.
Because wherever we are, even if we're on the beach somewhere, we
We can still sign in, that's right.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll see you Zoom Ali at the airport.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. I ran into, believe it or not, I ran into Zaida at the airport in Denver. I was coming back from my grandson's, that long story, coming back from my grandson's uh, first communion in Nebraska. And uh, on the way home, Lincoln's a very small airport, even though it's the capital. People actually drive up to the door, if you can imagine. Here, here it is. But anyhow, they have only one carrier that goes through the whole city. And as as we were getting on the plane, we were walking down the walkway and the attendant comes running down the ramp and says, "You all have to turn around and go back into the terminal because the cargo door won't close."
Oh.
Can you imagine?
Oh, yeah.
We got rerouted through Denver. It was such a hassle uh, and anything else. And and but anyhow, long story short, ended up in the airport. Same flight as Zaida. I'm sitting there with my daughter Laura and she says to me, "Doesn't that look like Zaida?" And I said, "It is Zaida." And Sumali, you were there too, but you were on a, you were on a different flight.
I was, I was, yeah.
About a small world, huh?
Well.
That was fun.
I was there a few days later, I think.
Yeah, that that's what you said.
Ayana has her hand raised.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I do. I wanted to let everyone know that a school committee woman, Latonya Naylor, uh, sends her regrets. She had to take her son to urgent care.
Oh, no.
So she just wanted to.
Do you know why?
I don't. It sounds like, yeah, she didn't tell me anything particular, but she did have to take him to urgent care. That's why she's not on tonight.
Yeah, well, and and you know, Latonya is such a resource and 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 her family, I think it's her uncle is the um, pastor of Holy Redeemer Church in the uh, Springfield.
Her father-in-law, her father-in-law.
Her father-in-law. Okay, and another place that we, we could meet and be, be effective. Because I know they they do, I've been to uh,
Bishop Naylor Day.
Yeah, Bishop Naylor Day. They have um, events.
Yeah.
Yeah, I also had the opportunity, which I couldn't believe, uh, um, speaking from the altar, which was a
I saw those pictures.
Yeah, yeah. I I love it. I I love being able to go to the different churches and speak, but it was, it was very different because that wouldn't happen in the parish I belong to. So anyhow, all right, another, another great meeting. Um, I'm gonna send out before July, the committees. Uh, still need a calendar committee, still need to know. But that actually, uh, Mariah, is what I'm hoping an intern will do for us. Yeah, now, now, Mariah is gonna help us at AIC for an intern, but that probably wouldn't happen to the fall either, right?
Yeah, all the students are gone right now. So um, I'm waiting for a response from like the business arts and sciences professors. Um, but I'll, I'll talk to some of the communications. And we'll see what we can get come August.
Yeah, and that would be helpful to take our minutes and, you know, send out emails and and calendar events and events. Yeah, that will be one other step that's gonna be very positive. Okay, don't want to keep anybody more than an hour. But I will be in touch and send out more correspondence. And if you didn't get the uh, recognition suggestions, let me know.
Bernice, thank you for joining us. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Bernice.
Thank you, Bernice. So much for joining. We appreciate it.
Our fault. Our fault. We'll be in touch. I'll be in touch.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Take care.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Take care.